We want to be respectful of everyone's time. We're going to start the study session for today for the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network Plan for 2024. Thank you, Heather, for coming and presenting to council.
Thanks for having me. Yes, thank you.
Jasmine?
Yes, Jackie.
You can hear me, and I echoed a little bit. Before you get started, if it's okay, I wanted to just introduce Heather and the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network.
That's fine.
Just a little segue into the importance of adopting this neighborhood plan, if that's okay. I couldn't be there in person, and I'm going to have to step out after I give the intro. So if that's all right with you.
Yes, you can go ahead.
Okay. Heather, is that okay with you, too?
Yes, thank you, Jackie.
Okay, great. Twenty-four years ago, December of 1999, following their annual analysis of Erie City social determinants of health as performed by St. Vincent Hospital, the congregation of the Sisters of St. Joseph of Northwestern Pennsylvania, who also ran the hospital at the time, determined it was time to take further direct action regarding the great needs of the Little Italy neighborhood surrounding and adjacent to the hospital. Following a full year of door-to-door assessment, the Monday soup kitchen meal at St. Paul's RC Church became the first program of the newly incorporated Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network Incorporated, the first of nine community gardens, and Help for Moms and Families soon followed. Twenty-four years later, programs include youth mentoring, after-school tutoring, murals, and public art installation, blight reduction, home renovation, green space development, youth workforce development, urban agricultural, seasonal farming market, and even a first-time home ownership program. More than just a traditional CDC, they still serve a hot meal every Monday night at St. Paul's. Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network has become a trusted agent for both care and change within Erie's neighborhoods. Twenty-four years of growth includes more than doubling the size of this CDC service area, which initially included only census tract 12 and 19 and a portion of 20. Nine years ago, the service area was extended across the full width of the city from Cranberry on the west to the East Bayfront Connector on the east. This new plan that you have in front of you and that you've reviewed provides a clear path beyond that, identifying a single strategy with targeted corridors throughout the full footprint. Developed throughout 2023 and 2024 fiscal year and formally adopted by the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network Board of Directors on August 18, 2024, this plan will provide the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network with an important framework for the many grants and private investments they funnel into the community development work within the six census tracts of their service area. Heather Casper has been with the Sisters of St. Joseph Network for eight years as the executive director, and she's going to guide you through the plan today and hopefully answer any questions you may have. I did want to mention that the Planning Department of the City of Erie supports this plan. We encouraged Heather and the Neighborhood Network to adopt this plan, to try to have the plan adopted at the city. We feel that we need to work collaboratively with each other, and we want to align our priorities with not only the comprehensive plan but all the other plans that we have in motion, and that it's of utmost importance that this plan be adopted and meet and fall within the priorities that we all want to achieve, which is moving forward. So Heather, good luck tonight, and thank you for your consideration from council.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Everybody's read it, right? Cover to cover, every page, every statistic, so this is going to be super short, right? Okay, so I wanted to give a little bit of an introduction. Really, my goal for this evening is building awareness. We have the plan, and we will work towards it, no matter what. But it's really helpful if the Planning Department, if City Council, if all of the department, if everybody understands where the work is coming from and what's fueling it. And so awareness is really the key for me tonight. I'm going to give a little bit of an introduction, we're going to talk about that, a little bit of a background, and then we'll walk through the plan, not very detailed because that would take us hours. I could talk about it for hours, for sure. And then I'll end with just an ask for your consideration moving forward. So if we can turn to page two, the introduction, that kind of helps to show what Jackie said about the footprint. There's a map of the city. And you can see the footprint, a pretty large footprint, and this is the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network service area. It follows the railroad tracks to the north, you can see that, and it goes to the southern border of that is 26th Street. On the left is Cranberry, there on the west, and on the east side, that's the Bayfront Connector. We really focus on residential, and we do a little bit of small business development, but that's not really our strength. And so there are areas in there where there's a lot of commercial, but we really do focus on a lot of the residential areas. So we asked City Architecture, which is a 30-year-old planning company out of Cleveland, to help us with this plan for a couple of reasons. Shar Kerr, if you know Shar Kerr, she had done all of our plans in the past year. We did one for Little Italy, we did one for the East Side Neighborhood, we did one for Federal Hill, but then she retired. And so City Architecture was a really fantastic firm that our West Bayfront used. And so that seemed to be, we could build on and leverage their knowledge that they had already gained from our West Bayfront, which is our next neighborhood border to the north, and we could really combine and collaborate our efforts, too, with that neighborhood group. So it helped for us to go with the same company that our West Bayfront had used, too. That was the reasoning for that. So it's important for me to share that this plan does not include any conversation about the social services that Jackie mentioned, the soup kitchen, the tutoring, the after-school programming that we have. This plan is really concentrating on revitalization and those sort of built environment strategies. And so we have a strategic plan as an organization that includes those other elements as well, but this plan really focuses on those neighborhood development activities. Page six, if you can turn to page six. I'm going to jump around a little bit here. This shows you a close-up of that footprint. Oh, I need to remember to do this. Maybe Craig can put that in. Wait, it's low. Just going to hope that ends up in the right place. Okay, so these are the activities that this plan focuses on: art and mural installations, the block grants that we can provide, facade grants, garden and green space improvements. Our Genesis Housing is our home ownership program. That includes home purchase, acquisition, and renovation, and home repair grants. So these are the type of activities, all the little dots that you see there on the map are places that we've already done this. Those dots, in fact, have increased since the information that we sent to City Architecture when they started this about a good year and a half ago. So now I'm going to ask you to flip to the centerfold. Because what we didn't want this plan to be was just another big binder sitting on a shelf. What we sent City Architecture to begin with were all of these plans you see and more. See right in the centerfold. It is page 20. So some of these plans are our own. You can see the SSJNN, Historic Little Italy Revitalization Plan that we did first in 2012. We've done periodic updates to that. We have the Federal Hill Strategic Plan that we commissioned ourselves. But we've got also in here, and they reviewed, the Active Erie Transportation Plan, Central City Neighborhood Plan from 2004, Erie County Parks, Chosin Recreation Plan, United Way, Safe House School. HANDS did a big market study prior to their most recent development. Erie Refocused, of course, the Penn.BRU. Erie Refocused, and then a Washington Park micro-plan that the Planning Department had started during COVID. I don't think that it ever finished, but we sent them the information that we had already gathered. So we started with these plans that already existed. And then the next page shows from our own strategic plan. These are our five priority initiatives for redevelopment work within our neighborhoods. And that is tending to the physical image, so blight remediation, garden and green spacing, crime prevention and safety, economic development, affordable housing, neighborhood conservation, and community engagement. Every single one of the programs that we do in any of our neighborhoods falls under one of these five categories. We have a long document with logic models for each thing, too, and I didn't include that to bore everybody with those details. But what they did is they took those five priority initiatives, and then they made this matrix that shows, for example, the Active Erie Transportation Plan. It also addresses the physical image. It addresses, the Washington Park Plan addresses physical image and crime prevention, economic development, affordable housing. And so they did sort of a cross-referencing here to show overlap and opportunities for us to leverage activities that others are also, you know, investing in, in the neighborhoods, Okay, so then what they did is they gave us some strategic targets for some of these initiatives. And now we're going to kind of go back to page four and start, just do a quick overview So here's our map again.
Can you make this page numbers a little smaller?
I know, I know. It's so true. You need to borrow my glasses. I had to make it difficult to not go just straight from front to back. Okay, so this shows again our footprint map at the top here, and it breaks it down by the census tracts within it. So we've got 12, 13, 17, 18, 19, and 20. So those are the six census tracts that we serve. And it shows, this spread, these two pages, is sort of an amalgamation of the next pages, which break each census tract down individually, but it shows overall, I think it shows the diversity that's just within our service area. If you look at every single metric here, the average age, we have from 23 years old in census tract 13 to 57 in census tract 19, which is, by the way, that's one of the census tracts with the oldest average age in the city. Percentage of white versus non-white, we have a huge, huge diversity there between our different census tracts. Number of households, median household income.
Four of the six are living at $20,000.
Yes. Census tract 19, you'll see throughout, and we have, just last, in 2023, we finished a plan just for census tract 19 because it has the highest average age, it has the lowest income. It needs a lot of attention, really needs to be uplifted. But you can see, we also have census tract 20, which includes the Washington Park area. That is, you know, a very classical middle neighborhood where people have more disposable income, and you can see in the safety and the quality of the homes that are there and the upkeep of those. There's a great diversity. I think that it's important, some of these, they pulled up four bullet points at the bottom of page five. And I'm just going to read a couple of these. While the city of Erie is 70.8% white, our service area reflects a much more diverse population. Some areas, the percentage of foreign-born residents are double the city average. These new Americans are less likely to drive and depend on safe pedestrian, bike, and public transportation networks. We see that a lot, people that do not own cars. The levels of renter occupied versus homeowners, that's sort of the circles there on the middle of page five. Huge diversity there. Census tracts 13 and 19 nearly double. Erie of city's average of just below 50% renter occupied housing. And that, of course, we know impacts the stability of a neighborhood. If it's primarily renters versus owners, that makes a big impact. We have the graph at the top of page five that shows the persons below poverty line, the percentage. Erie average is 24%. You can see ours, some of them dip well below that. So these neighborhoods need a lot of love, a lot of love. They do not show up in the city plans that say, let's focus on downtown, let's focus on Bayfront. We have about 14 to 15% of the city's residents live in these neighborhoods. We like to use the statistic that we have more people that live in these census tracts than live in the city of Meadville. And so that's a lot of people that are relying on services and improvements. And so we are a mighty staff of 11. We do what we can, but of course, we can't do everything. The following pages go through census tract, individual census tracts, and we don't need to go through each of those, but I'll kind of show you with each page. If we go to page eight, that's census tract 12. So this is Little Italy, and this is where the Sisters have been for 24 years now. Each of these pages, in the upper right-hand corner, it shows you where that census tract falls within our full footprint. And then it gives you the average age, the occupied versus vacant housing, new Americans, foreign-born population, and then we've got a little closer detail of those maps and some of the activities that have already taken place, that we've been able to accomplish within each census tract. So here we've got art, you'll see, this is, as I said, the Sisters have been here since 2000, and so there's been quite a lot of work in the Little Italy neighborhood. In this census tract particularly, there are lots and lots of those little dots. But the plan goes through tract by tract and shows you the work that's been done. It pulls out green spaces, it pulls out municipal parks. And a couple paragraphs, just a little description of each of the census tracts. Going to pause if any, any questions so far before we get into some of the recommendations. All right, if you'll flip then to page 24, which is the page after those priority initiatives that we already took a look at. These are key takeaways that City Architecture provided us. This was an objective report from them. This is not guided at all. So some of the information came as a surprise, and it's kind of interesting to us. It was not a surprise to us, the very first sentence, there's a high level of need in this planning area. That was, that was an obvious. The first bullet point, though, we started in 2000, but it's only been eight years since we spread east of Peach Street to the current service area footprint. There is a need to balance programming and investments across the area. They recommended that we find a centralized headquarters. You right now have an office on West 18th Street, we have an office on East 26th Street, and they recommended that we consolidate those to consolidate our resources. As soon as my staff heard this, they loved that idea because it can be difficult working between two different locations. And so then it opens up a new, for strategic planning, how do we still have a presence throughout the full footprint if we pull all of the office space together? And that's not unsurmountable, but it's something that we've started thinking about. The geographic center of our footprint is right about 21st and Peach. I'm going to skip down to a few more bullet points down there. They also recommended that we expand our home ownership activities. Right now, we have grants that we can afford, maybe one a year. We acquire a property that needs a lot of love, we acquire it for almost nothing, and then, you know, put $100,000 into it. That's not an exaggeration, that's how much it costs to renovate it. But they are structurally sound, wonderful homes, and we renovate those. And then we have a rental program where folks rent from us while they are saving for a down payment for a home, to buy a home. And then we also have different educational programs, home ownership education. When a light switch needs to be fixed, then Kyle, our property manager, will go fix it, but he'll show the individual how to do it as well for when, in the future, when they own their own home. Changing your furnace filter every so often, all of those kind of things. It's all part of the education, and we connect everybody. It's all part of the education and we, we connect everybody with what, if, if they need to boost their credit score. Then we, we connect them with programs that do that. St. Martin's Center has first-time home buyer classes. So we, we really try to plug them into resources in the city. And we also have been acquiring single-family homes within our footprint and renovating those because there are not enough single-family home, starter homes for purchase that are in a condition that we would feel like we're setting our program participants up just for success. Unless we're helping them to find a home that they, that's not going to need a new roof and a new furnace and, you know, all of these capital improvements when, within the first couple of years. And so we're also buying and renovating single-family homes for that purchase too. And certainly our, the folks in that program have the first, first look at any of those properties. And in fact, part of the, the rent that we've been collecting, part of that goes into a savings account. If the program participant purchases within our footprint, then a hundred dollars a month for the entire tenure of their rent with us has been put into savings as a gift closing as well, so that we're trying to incentivize folks to stay within our neighborhoods as well. So they, city architecture recommended that we scale that up. If we can afford to do one or two a year, then what would it take for us to do five of those a year? There is no shortage of properties that need the work. There's honestly no shortage of properties that deserve to be saved and can be saved within such a large footprint that we have. The community gardens and farmers market, of course. Most people are familiar with the Sisters and the gardens in Little Italy. And that is something that we know that we do well. And so to continue doing that, finding spaces that are good for growing, not every place is, makes a good garden. But it's because we also use that, that gardening program for teen workforce development and teaching them some workforce skills. Then if we can expand that program, then they recommended we do that because that also aids in the beautification of the neighborhoods as well. They also recommended that we capitalize a bit on the Little Italy name and that people already know it, and it's a very, it has, it has a pride of place. And so they, they have some recommendations within this plan for us to really kind of run with that. And we have banners, but maybe to include some additional, additional Little Italy branded ideas for that neighborhood. Of course, the New American Refugee Community, we have deep ties with them. And they really are the current driver for population growth in Erie. Most Census Tracks are decreasing in population. But the new Americans are actually making, some of the Census Tracks are increasing. They emphasize partnership, which we try to do well. We are, as I said, eleven people in a pretty large footprint, and so we're stretched pretty thin. So they have some recommendations for how we can expand some of our programming and use some of the other organizations that we partner with, with throughout the footprint to, you know, use their location for expanded services. And then they had larger infrastructure initiatives. But these are really the ask and the consideration for city council and for the city departments. Because we don't, Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network, don't have the ability to do road resurfacing, change intersections, address safeties, intersection safety, those kind of things. So those are the key takeaways. If you flip to the next page, which is twenty-six, the following pages provide some targeted ideas for the Little Italy neighborhood, for the Federal Hill neighborhood, for the east, our east side neighborhood. And they have focused areas within. Twenty-sixth. Then they've also identified some corridors for us to focus on. And some gateways. So the next page shows Federal Hill and some of the recommendations there. We did a strategic plan with the shop owners and some of the residents, some of the property owners in Federal Hill, we did that about five years ago. And so they extended some of those recommend, some of those findings that we had back then. And they've also included some new ones of their own. And so that includes, they, they believe that our centralized SSJ and N offices would be best located right here within Federal Hill. Continued facade improvements. There's, anybody who's driven down that intersection from twenty-six down Peach Street, that's a crazy, crazy road. People are flying by there, and if you try to cross the street there, it's very dangerous. And so they have recommendations for traffic calming and making the crosswalks visible. Many of the crosswalks don't even have lines painted. And they recommended some identity elements, pole wraps and banners. Lots of community wayfinding signs, ideas for planters and hanging baskets that the shop owners could have. Providing some way to connect the east and the west across Peach and State. Maybe with the, the use of the new city buildings there at French, that sort of straddle. Go from state to French, that kind of straddles that whole area. If a, if a walkway could be put as part of that planning through Twenty-Second Street so that you could actually walk the whole way through there, was an idea that they had. Decorative lighting, alley upgrades, traffic calming measures. We've already started a lot of these activities, actually, we received a Mission Main Street grant from ACRE. And a lot of the, we started two years ago with, if you'll notice on Federal Hill, some of those shop owners have started adding facade lights that add pedestrian-level lighting for safety. And it, so it spotlights their shop, but it also adds safety at the sidewalk level. And those are all funded through a grant that we received from ACRE, and we're continuing that this year as well. So those are some recommendations for Federal Hill. For the next page, Focus Area Two, Little Italy. Recommended some Italian-themed, maybe high-visibility crosswalks. There are some examples here in the pictures. Pittsburgh has done this really well, they, they got Bloomberg Grants for Asphalt Art, is what they call it. And they have painted, instead of having structural bumpouts or sort of traffic direction, measures that are, that are physically built into a corner to slow traffic. They have murals, almost like murals painted. It's not on the actual roadway where the cars are driving, it is just bringing your attention to, here's a turn. Here's where you should slow down, here's where people are crossing. And it's just paint.
Well, I, I kind of like the idea of, you guys have already started this. Like, you're not, you're not waiting for the city to say, okay, you guys have already gotten some funds, you guys are already working on a lot of the suggestions. I know the Sisters of St. Joseph do great work in their neighborhood. I've moved to that neighborhood last year and I really, I really like it versus living on Tenth and Brandis, which was the Lower East Side. So it's a lot quieter, feels more like a community, which is nice. So I can see the improvements that have taken a lot of hard work from the last twenty years, from the looks of it. But yeah, so I'm happy that you guys are already working on it.
Yeah, yeah, just, just from our tax credit grants alone, we bring a quarter of a million dollars into our neighborhoods every year.
Nice.
And so those, we use that tax credit because those grants are often matched by ACRE grants or others. And so we, I, I can't even remember the last time that we, no, no, we did just get a grant from the Redevelopment Authority to some of the ARPA money, but we are doing the work and asking for the money later.
That happens sometimes.
Yes. So here's the, you know, neighborhood corridor, wayfinding signage, you'll see that throughout all of the focus areas, there are similar activities. Banners, utility pole wraps, facade renovations, some signage. The east side focus area. Their top recommendation was extending our home renovation and our Genesis homeownership program there, and we did start that as well. So we purchased our first home on East Twenty-Second Street. And so we acquired that just two months ago and have started renovation of that. That's a single-family home that we will hopefully sell to one of our homeownership participants. It's a great property with a side lot that was added on to it to double the space right across from the Poetry Park on East Twenty-Sixth Street by the area where the Benedictines had really focused a lot of their activities, Trinity Park area. You'll see some of the same things. They're asking actually for us to add some street, address the trees that are there because the trees need to be trimmed back considerably. They, they block a lot of the lighting, a lot of the streetlights are, the, the light itself is completely swallowed by the trees that are, that are, have grown around it. So trimming those, but also adding some new street trees. We also, we started that as well, Parade Street has, a few years ago, we planted about forty-three trees right on Parade Street. Sawdust repair, streetlights, commercial facade improvements, wayfinding, again, utility pole wraps and some infill housing because there's a lot of vacant property in the east side neighborhoods. Then they identified some corridors. This is extremely helpful for us as staff too, because it's, it's such a big area. And for us to have our own unified vision for how to tie the whole footprint together. Twenty-first Street seems like a natural fit, the historic overlay district, they're proposing for Twenty-first Street, there's gorgeous places there. But once you get over into the east side neighborhood on Twenty-first Street, it's not the same residential feel, neighborhood feel that, like Jasmine mentioned, is, is something that, that it feels like home in the neighborhood. And so they shifted it up to Twenty-Sixth Street because it has a very residential feel to it. Also has some, some great open space, that potential for some additional pocket parks, just some picnic areas, areas that we might be able to help the neighbors find some outdoor spaces to be able to gather. So they, of course, focused on Eighteenth Street through Little Italy as a strategic corridor. I should note that most of the homes that we own, the rental units that we own are clustered along Seventeenth Street. And so that is, we're slowly buying properties in each of those blocks too so that we can focus a lot of our efforts into targeted zones as well. But Eighteenth Street has the potential to be some mixed use, some commercial and residential growth there. And then Chestnut Street being a highly-used route for people getting, going around the hospital, coming into the hospital, getting around the hospital, going north and south if they don't want to take Cherry. And so they sort of created a line for us, if you imagine a whole walking route that just starts along Eighteenth Street, goes up Chestnut, and then continues the whole way and ends up right in McKinley Park on the east side, crossing Ash Street, which is a nice little commercial area where we have Seraphin's Market, some other, some other investments, private investments that are happening there. That you'll see right in the center of that corridor, there's a big star. And that is where, right now, the city is proposing to, to put their police and fire, I think, facilities right there. So that's an opportunity to really showcase and make that a central gathering space, an area that is welcoming to neighbors as well as the city.
The Miller Brothers Building, that's okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Talking about the Miller Brothers.
Miller Brothers Building, yeah, it's that big gray building right there. And I, I don't believe the plans for that building have progressed beyond.
Last council knew we were still just inventorying what updates they were going to have to do. And I know that they were slowly starting to work on some of the things that they could get done. I mean, I don't think it's going to be functional for at least two or three years from what they were explaining to us, but we'll see. I would like to move our vehicles over there because underneath City Hall is kind of busy some days, so we'll see. Kind of busy, no room to move anything. Yes, there we go.
So other gateways that they included. Brown Avenue and Liberty, so the old Triangle Tech building and that the construction company, that now I'm blanking on the name of their guy, right there on Nineteenth Street, right in our neighborhood, purchased that. And they hope to make, they, they received zoning variance to be able to put some apartments into the Triangle Tech. And so I don't exactly know how far they are on that either, but they identified that as a great opportunity for a gateway into the neighborhood. At West Twenty-Sixth Street and Peach Street, of course, that big, huge mural and the one on the other side. Those, those are, those murals were actually funded by a grant that we got from ACRE as well and PNC Bank. That is a great gateway to all of the cars that travel down Peach Street to come downtown. Parade Street and Twenty-sixth, of course, right where Palacos is. All of the renovation that Palacos is doing right now, they, part of the renovations are also funded from Keystone Facade Grant that we received from the PADCED. So the last two pages combine all of those initiatives, priority initiatives into a chart by target neighborhood, corridors and gateways. And this is where my ask for consideration comes in. Because just as the, the plans for Miller, the Miller Brothers Building have not progressed yet to a point where every square foot of it has been designated. When you hear of plans that include anything within this footprint, we would love to be a part of that to see how we can leverage the dollars that we bring into the neighborhood and the activities and the relationships that we have with the neighbors. Just about every plan, if it doesn't have neighbor input, it should. And that's something that we can help provide. And so the consideration is really an easy one. As soon as someone's talking about something that's happening in our neighborhood, should jump to mine. Have you talked, have you talked to the Sisters about this? Have you asked if they can help you engage the neighbors, give feedback? That would be a pretty simple ask, I think. But some of these initiatives, when they asked us to classify, is this something that you want to do in the next two years? Is this something that you want to do in the near term or the long term? There were also a number of infrastructure items that we couldn't possibly hope to affect without also some. without also some cooperation from the city departments. There are, some of the infrastructure improvements are things that we can't even take on the expense, like sidewalk replacement, reconstruction, those kind of things. The, just the curb, just the curb parking, the curbs on Federal Hill by those shops are largely nonexistent, let alone not marked, you can't actually see where you can park. Road repaving, streetlight and traffic light updates, of course, those are not something that are, that's within our ability to do any of that, but would make huge difference in, in, within these plans, even just the removal of the orphaned utility poles. You know, a new one goes up and the old one doesn't come down, and they're still there. Street tree maintenance, of course, replacement, planting of new ones, and then just addressing the public transit. There are very few benches, let alone a secure, enclosed space to wait for the bus.
Yeah, they're outside of State Street in that area.
And not even benches at the bus stops. There's signs, but there aren't even benches. And so, you know, we have residents who live at Friendship Towers, and the closest groceries they can get are Larry's Market, but many of them have mobility issues, and there's not even someplace for them to sit and rest in a walk to Larry's and back. So some of those things are things that we can do. We can install park benches, we can do that. We, we don't have the authority to affect where the bu, like a bus stop, a bus shelter, something like that.
Have you guys reached out to the EMTA about these?
We have, and they usually are very good about it. They, as long as we also bring some money to the table. There, you know, some years ago, we, we actually had a contest, and so there's a bus shelter at State and 18th Street, the green bus shelter, and we had, so it's got a green roof on it. Yeah, it's a really neat one. And so they, they, they are very, they are very collaborative. It usually, they've even pitched in some money towards some of these things too. So that is a super brief overview of a lot of planning work that went into this. What, what questions does anyone have?
If I may, thank you very much. Definitely a lot of things that I would like to see throughout the whole city. The telephone poles absolutely drive me insane. After every corner, there's like two poles. Why can't we get rid of one pole and just have the pole that you put in there? That's throughout the whole city, that's like, that's just.
Lazy.
My hair keeps getting upset getting rid of poles. What are you going to do?
Oh. Okay. And benches, 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 the more benches, the better. So I am not familiar with your West Side office, but I'm very familiar with your East Side office, and that's a conundrum because the people in the area really use that East Side office. So if you get rid of that, and you talked about people not using cars, so they lose that connectivity because they're walking to that office. You know, that's their place to get bikes, Seraphin's Market, a small business is not too far away from there, and, you know, people walk to there. So there's a development, like you said, of the community in that area. And so to just like say, okay, you're not going to be here anymore, we're doing a new one, but you have to walk even further, you know, that's going to be hard.
Yeah. It's true, we're all trying to figure that out. I know for that in particular, right now, our bike program has grown beyond what the neighborhood network can provide. If you're not familiar with the bike program, we, we get in hundreds of donated bikes every year, and we fix them up, and then we donate them. Priority is to the resettlement agencies because a lot of the new Americans don't have cars, and so it's how they get to work. But we're supposed to be operating within a footprint, a defined footprint, and we can't say to people, well, you don't live in our neighborhood, so we can't give you a bike. And also the need really, since there's not a great bike repair shop within the city, there's a need for a bike co-op, a proper community co-op. And so we're actually working with Bike Erie right now. They have hired someone to take over as the director of that program. We'll continue to help it with the rent and the liabilities and, and at least for another year, and even some of the grants we've already received for materials to help that transition that into a standalone bike co-op that is more, that is supported more by Bike Erie than by us, because that's really the, the organization that has the specialty and has the experience and the knowledge to do that. So they would probably stay in that same building, and maybe we could still have use of the front of it for meetings. St. John the Baptist Church, it would, we have partnerships with so many other organizations that we might just have to shift some of our thinking and education to have some of those community gathering spaces in other, with other agencies or the JFKs, or any of the places that are within our footprint that we can really utilize space that's maybe underused during some times too. So it is a conundrum for sure, but we do feel like we can, we can figure it out.
I mean, it's never a bad thing when you outgrow your current location, so it's always great. It just is unfortunate that the new growing pains will cause a little bit of a ripple effect. I'm pretty sure that's the only thing that people are concerned about, is if we close one office, what happens? But I'm pretty sure you guys will, and ladies will figure it out. I just know that this plan has been in works for quite some time, and I don't really have anything to piece or pull apart from it, other than, you know, I appreciate the work that you guys at the Sisters have been able to do for our community, and I'm happy that the city is listening to the people who have been doing work in certain neighborhoods and trying to adapt the plans that they've been working on, and they have already spent money on to form, because sometimes a plan sounds good, but when it comes down time to pay for it, it's very unfortunate on how expensive these plans get, and sometimes we don't use them. So if there's a plan that's already in use, why not adapt it? Does anyone else on council have anything to add or mention? I mean, you've been on council for quite some time now, for the last 20 years with the Sisters of St. Joseph, they've been able to do great work, right?
Oh, they do super well.
Right?
I've worked with them when I was at Penn Elect, and they had some problems out on the building out on the West Side, and very good to work with. The good thing about it, when the electricity went out, they didn't cost us out.
Professional courtesy.
Thank you, Lord. No, they're very, very good, and I've worked with many individuals and learned a lot from them as well.
I like the idea of maybe a corridor, a corridor to like distinctively show. I know whenever I drive past Larry's, I know that store is like a staple for people in that community, so to be able to like, I see people come and take pictures of the mural, mural that's right there outside their building, just randomly I'll see families doing it, and I'm always thinking to myself like, wow, that picture's probably been there for at least 25 years, there's probably lots of different families that have done that. So it's like, there's certain things in Erie that just make Erie Erie, and to be able to define those neighborhoods is not a bad thing in my opinion. I feel like the community will feel heard and validated.
Yeah, people have such memories, there's, we, we are dying to do this tulip festival. People near the cemetery, Chestnut Street, remember tulips being, having been planted there, lots and lots of tulips in that neighborhood. And so we're actually scheming about maybe in 2026, having the first annual tulip festival and working with the Cemetery Association to plant tens of thousands of bulbs along there and have planters that people can take home, and it can become, the tulip can become, again, sort of a symbol of that little neighborhood that can, that would just be beautiful and easy, easy to plant bulbs. So the neighbors, when we talk with them, have incredible memories and really neat ideas that kind of have fallen away, and many of them should be resurrected.
I think it sounds beautiful. I know the cemetery, after a certain time, takes away any of the personable items, so to have those plants permanently there scattered throughout, I think that would make people feel a lot better about the removal of personal items.
I just wanted to say thank you. Look, just looking at the demographic within, within the footprint, it really is quite representative of, of all of Erie, or, you know, especially those who, who are most hurting within Erie, the work to really elevate those who are coming into the city. I think that there's, there's this misnomer that, you know, when, when refugees enter our city, that there's, there's this flood of funding that, that follows them, and that's just not true. And oftentimes, the, it's, it's organizations like the Sisters of St. Joseph Network, that makes sure that they, they're able to stay and stay safely. So just, just the work that is being, being done is, is, I think, a solid snapshot of the work that needs to be done, and so many of the other pockets too. But I commend you for doing so much with honestly so very little, so very little, and serving the most often in need in our city, so thank you. I know that is not, that is not easy work, it's exhausting work, so just thank you. And I was, I was kind of surprised that the only ask was that we, we bring up your name.
Well, I also like to say that charity is not a substitute for public policy. And so knowing that we exist and thinking, oh, well, the Sisters are going to take care of that, is not a substitute for seeing to it that, you know, code enforcement happens that, you know, all of the great changes, like the, the zoning changes that are with the accessory bill, like those kind of things are really important because they help the neighborhood too, and it's, it's those kind of things that really have to happen.
It generally is a teamwork effect to get our city to where we want it to be. So if more people start collaboratively working together and communicating, I think we will get Erie to where it needs to be for the next generation, especially for like the simple, easy things, like the lightings and the trees, and I've seen to where there are not enough benches, and we do have an aging population, and I always feel guilty when I'm walking with my clients, and they need a rest, and there's nowhere for us to rest. So, you know, there are issues that could be improved right away, so maybe we can collaboratively work on this, especially while grant funding is available to apply for. I know we as a city apply for a lot of things, but sometimes I think our priority is other areas of where the grant should be applied for, and I think if we're getting a whole grant department together, we should be working on everything we can bring money in for, not just specific wants on our wish list. But anyways, that's just a comment that I had. I don't know if anybody else feels that same way.
One of my favorite quotes from my doctoral program is, "Never give charity what is due justice." I think you said it quite nicely today.
Alrighty, does anyone else have anything to mention for the good of the order, or are we done for the night?
I think I would just have one, one more ask that I think the Planning Commission will review this, and then at a future city council meeting, we'll ask for it to be formally adopted.
Yep, that's the process.
They didn't make, they didn't make a quorum today at the Planning Commission.
Oh, okay. So that's why you weren't able to present. Okay, all right, well, things will get moving when they get moving, and you've been presented to council, and, you know, we pretty much for the most part approve of, of what you've been able to break down for us, and it's great to see the reflections of the percentages and the data. That is always great to have that referenced. But I think that's it for the study session. Meeting adjourned, see you all tomorrow for our city council meeting at 6:00 PM. Thank you.